Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm Linda Cohen, Vice Chair of the Wayzetta School Board, and I call the order of the Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for June 14th, 2021. This meeting is open to the public and also livestreamed on YouTube. The recording of this meeting will also be available on the Wayzetta Public Schools website by clicking on District and then School Board. On Friday, March 13th, 2020, Governor Walz issued Executive Order 20-1, which declared a peacetime state of emergency pursuant to his powers under the Minnesota Statute's Chapter 12, Emergency Management. This allows school boards to meet by conference call or other electronic meetings under Minnesota Statute 13D, Period 021. Before we both begin, I'll go through a couple of reminders for our Zoom participants. Please identify yourself when speaking. Please mute your microphone when listening. Please do not make use of the chat feature as this is a public recorded meeting. And in an attempt to ensure all voices are heard, each board member will be called upon for all action items. Feel free to pass if you don't have a question or comment. Now, please call the roll.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Chris McCullough.
Good evening, I'm here.
Sarah Johansson.
Good evening, I'm here.
Bonita Lucky, here. Cheryl Pozine, here. C N Falconer. Okay, Andrea King, she's on vacation. Chase Anderson.
Here.
Linda Cohen.
Here. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, the consent agenda items. Those items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The recommended action is to approve the full agenda as presented and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to that effect?
This is Chris, I so move.
This is Sarah, I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, so please call the roll.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Cheryl Pozine.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
C N Falconer. Andrea King. Andrea King, Linda Cohen.
Yes. So the motion passes with the members present. Next item on the agenda is reported by our Student Council Representative, Sarah Cowan. Sarah, we are delighted that you're here. We really appreciate, even during summer vacation, that you've come, so we're eager to hear your report.
Yes, thank you for having me. So I'll just share a screen for this meeting, especially since term four school year has wrapped up for all of our students at the high school. Really just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight some of the events that happened between that May meeting and June 14th. Most importantly, the high schoolers, seniors in particular, we were really excited to be able to have graduation on June 4th at 6:30 PM at Miruchi, and it was really a wonderful time to see everyone there, the entirety of the school board, which was a very unexpected surprise in terms of being able to host the event and having such normal conditions. But the entire senior class at Wayzetta High School is very thankful, and we were extremely excited to be able to have that. And then, just to go back a little bit more, Wayzetta Student Council, our junior class was also able to successfully put on senior prom this year back in May. So on May 15th, we were able to have a really successful prom. We had about 600 students there. It was a masked event, so a little bit different than usual, but it was still really exciting to have that back and kick off the start of a normal fall, normal spring, summer term for a lot of the students at the high school. And then recently, after the seniors left the building, and so after graduation on the 4th, there was still one more week left at the high school. And on Monday, June 5th, or Monday, June 7th, that was our last Monday of the school year for all of the students other than the seniors. And we were able to put on our annual Junior Step Up Day. And so all of the now seniors, Class of 2022, were able to take a couple of pictures and celebrate their step up to their new school year as seniors. And just last news with Student Council, we were able to host elections and we're really excited. And I personally am really excited to see our juniors now seniors step up and have a somewhat normal year and get back to planning all of those really fun and exciting Student Council and general community building events that, which some of them, we kind of missed out on this past school year. So on the left is our new board for Wayzetta Student Council at the high school, and then our new Senior Vice President, Ramira Ambrose, who will be reporting to the Wayzetta School Board starting next fall. So that is my...
Thank you so much, Sarah, and I'd like you to tell everyone, the board and any audience, what your plans are for next year.
Yeah, so next year I will be diving and studying at the U.S. Military Academy at West Point East, and I leave on June 24th for basic training. So short summer, but I'm really excited for the future.
Wish you all the best in your new endeavors, which are pretty impressive. Do any other board members have comments or questions? Chris?
Yes, Sarah, I just wanted to say congratulations, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board. It was our honor to be at graduation, and we're hugely fortunate that it was able to happen in person and went as well as it did. So it was an honor to be there, and thanks for all your help this past year. I know it's been a challenging year for you and all of the students. So thank you for representing the high school so well, and best of luck. Sarah?
Yeah, I will just say ditto to all that Chris said and say, "Good luck, Sarah. It's so exciting." And I love the diving at West Point, and congratulations.
Cheryl?
Just I would like to echo what my colleagues have said. It's been a pleasure having you here during our meetings, and really, best of luck to you. I'm sure that the sky is the limit. So good luck. Come visit us.
Sarah, congratulations, and I wish you so much success. I was so supercharged and excited about the graduation, so it was awesome and so good to see the juniors to step up, to have a chance to actually do that and take some pictures. So, so exciting. Good luck to you.
Yes, Sarah. Since I know reports from organizations will go on under recognitions, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. And Sarah, before you sign off, best wishes to you, and thanks so much, you for being here and representing the high school so well. Best wishes. Our next agenda item is recognitions, and we have one recognition this evening for a retiree, and that person we recognize is Cynthia Axelrod, who worked in Culinary Express at the high school for 13 years. So we thank her for her dedicated efforts and we wish her well as she goes into that next chapter of her life. And on the note of retirement, I'll just mention that tomorrow, we're happy to be recognizing retirees not only from this year, but also from last year. She'll recall up due to the pandemic, we were unable to convene a retirement gathering last year. Everybody will probably thought that tomorrow at Central Middle School, we'll be recognizing those retirees from last year and this year. So hopefully around the front end of a school year, that will get us a little more back, but also always one of the traditions will be able to be on the appropriate timelines and our preferred protocols. That's all of our recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. The next item on the agenda is the audience opportunity to address the school board. I know that Jim Westrom wants to address the board.
Yes, excuse me, Madam Chair. Just a reminder that the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, or ESER, funds will be approved later in the board meeting tonight. And there is a requirement to seek input from district and community stakeholders as well as public comment. I do not believe anybody is in attendance tonight to make a public comment, but I would like to just extend the invitation to any member of the community that we are meeting at 8 o'clock AM tomorrow. And they are welcome to reach out to myself or the Superintendent Secretary to get the Zoom link information to attend that meeting. That meeting will have business community members as well as parents and students who will probably, who will be discussing the ESER funding. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
I don't believe there are any other audience or distance on the school board. Since we don't have any student curriculum presentation this evening, we will move on to administrative reports and recommendations. And Superintendent Anderson, you led first on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and that particular topic is for a policy approval. As you're well aware, painfully aware perhaps, we've had a number of iterations of our face covering policy during the course of the school year, and that's because requirements and parameters for that particular policy have evolved and changed through the work of the Minnesota Department of Health, Minnesota Department of Education. So there's yet one more modified policy version for your review and consideration this evening in your board packet. I should note that this is the policy that we would look forward to having going into effect on July 1st and positioning this for the balance of summer school. And it's too early to tell at this point what expectations or obligations school districts may have for the fall term when we start up school again. But we'll stay tuned. You can rest assured to know that we'll be tracking that and bringing back further policy modifications at a later date. So two individuals that are listed in the board packet is being here to provide comments. We're unable actually to be here this evening, but two engineers that were closely with the modifications to the policy that's in your board packet were Jenny Eber, our Director of Community Education, and Don Wilson, our Supervisor of Health Services. So I'd like to read the text that's included on the cover sheet, and I'll show the recommended action. Attached is policy and regulations for your consideration. Policy and regulations were reviewed using the Minnesota School Board Association model policy by the Teaching and Learning Department and other district stakeholders where appropriate. The final review was committed by the Policy Committee of the School Board. Changes are indicated by an underlying or strike through rotation. Executive Order 21-11 is amended by Executive Order 21-21 and 21-23 includes updated face covering guidelines and requires all businesses and entities to follow the guidance through June 30, 2021, or until 70% of Minnesota's age 16 and above receive at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine, whichever is earlier. The policy will be effective until such time. Policy 103 base coverage is included, and the recommended action is to approve the updates to Policy 103 base coverage as attached and included in the board packet. That I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Recommended action is to approve the updates to Policy 103 base coverage as attached. Is there a motion to that effect?
This is Chris, and I will quickly waive the second reading of Policy 103 and move Policy 103 ahead for approval tonight.
This is Bonita, and I second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Cheryl?
No questions, thank you.
Sarah?
No discussion, thank you.
Bonita?
No discussions, thank you.
And Chris?
I would just like to add that the Policy Committee took a very close look at this face coverings update, if you will, from our different state departments, and a lot of input from Dr. Anderson's team, including Jody Robinson, Jenny Eber, Don Wilson. I think we're in a good place with this policy, and it's been a tough one because of the fluid nature of this policy, as Dr. Anderson indicated. So I think we're in a good place, hopefully moving towards summer, pending any changes from our state agencies.
Thank you. Now, please call the roll.
Yes, Cheryl Pozine.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
C N Falconer and Andrea King are not present. Linda Cohen.
Yes. The motion passes. We have most people present at the meeting. So thank you all very much, and the people who worked hard on that. It's a lot of very detailed work. Next item on the agenda is the Finance and Business Services. And Mr. Westrom, you have seven items here.
I do. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. We have seven items in the financial and finance and business area. And the first item doesn't require approval, but just a reminder that we provide the school board with financial reports on a monthly basis for your review. And the reports that are included for the month of April 30th, 2021, are an analysis of the financial reports, a statement of revenues, a statement of expenditures, and an investment summary. And once again, we have a finance committee of the board that goes into great detail. We met last week, and nothing unusual was noted. So at this point, no action is required, but I'd be happy to respond to any questions if there are.
See if there are any questions. So Bonita Lucky.
Sorry about that. Linda, no questions.
Okay, Sarah Johansson.
No questions, just a reiteration that we did have a pretty lively conversation in finance last week. So thank you to the committee for their work.
Chris McCullough?
No questions, thanks.
And Cheryl Pozine?
No questions, thanks very much.
Under the next item, since we do not need to take action on this one.
Yes, the next item will require school board action. You probably recall that on June 1st, we asked the board to approve ESER 1 and ESER 2 funding. That's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds that are coming through the federal government by the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, also known as the CARES Act. And those awards were awarded in three rounds, and the ESER awards were approved by the school board without the ESER 3 20% set aside for learning loss. So at this point, I'm not going to read through everything that's here, but basically, the district administration received guidance from the Department of Education and recommends approving the ESER 3 20% set aside for learning loss for the 2021-2022 budget. The allocation is $533,273. It must be expended by September of 2024, and the allocation includes summer learning opportunities after school or extended day. Remaining 80% of the district's ESER 3 allocation will be used for COVID-19-related expenditures that have already been incurred in the current year for 2020-2021. I have already shared this, but ESER 3 includes a requirement for a safe return to in-person instruction and a continuity of service plan. The plan requires input from the district and community stakeholders as well as public comment. The district's Wayzetta Learns webpage has been used as a resource for students, parents, and staff, and fulfills the plan requirements of communicating a plan for a safe return to in-person learning. And as I mentioned during the audience opportunity to address the board, tomorrow morning, the district will convene its Citizens Advisory Finance Council. I have that backwards, Citizens Finance Advisor Council, and will discuss the ESER 3 funds. So ESER 3 20% learning loss set aside for 2021-22, revenue $533,273, and expenditures $533,273. So with that, Madam Vice Chair, you can read the recommended action.
Thank you. The recommended action is to approve the district administration's recommended ESER 3 20% learning loss set aside revenue and expenditure budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. I'll again ask if there are any comments or questions. Chris will call.
Madam Chair, I think we need a motion first, and that's approved.
Yes, sorry, we didn't have a moment.
And I so move.
Okay, thank you.
This is Sarah.
All, this is Chris, I'll second it.
Okay, now we can have questions and comments. Chris will call.
I have none. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Westrom and Andrea King.
Sarah Johansson.
Sure, I'll just do a thanks in advance to our CFAG, our Citizens Finance Advisory Council, who will be convening tomorrow at 8 AM to have this continued discussion.
No questions or comments. Thank you so much. Mr. Westrom?
Just a clarifying question, is the intention to use this entire amount, as noted in here, will that be used during summer, this current summer? Do you intend for that amount to be used this summer?
Yes, thank you for that question. As the grant indicates, those dollars can be used through 2024. So to allow us to begin ordering for this summer after July 1st, we need the board to approve the budget, but I believe that some of those hours will be carried forward to future years.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Now, although, please call the roll.
Yes, Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Cheryl Pozine.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Both C N Falconer and Andrea King not present. Linda Cohen.
Yes. The motion passes. And also, most present. The next two items are equipment, our projects, and Mr. Westrom, they're yours.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. You may recall that the board has a Facility Committee of the Board that meets on a monthly basis, and included in that is a 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan that the board will actually approve in July of this year. And you may recall that you approved the 10-year plan a year ago. So the next two projects are basically a part of that plan. So the first item is Central Middle School Track Rehabilitation Project. The bid opening for this project was held at the Wayzetta Public Schools Welcome Center on Thursday, June 3rd, 2021 at 2 PM. The scope of the project includes removing the existing asphalt, treating existing soil beneath the asphalt, and repaving the surface. The project is being financed by LTFM. The enclosed document lists the lowest responsible bidders and their respective base bids for the purposes of contract awards, as enclosed in the detailed bid tabulation and recommendation from Inspect. So Madam Vice Chair, the recommended action is before you.
Thank you. And the recommended action is to award to the lowest responsible bidder listed in the enclosed document Northland paving in the total amount of $159,333 construction contracts for the project. Is there a motion to that effect?
This Cheryl, I so move.
Thank you, and a second?
This is Bonita Lucky, I second.
It's been moved and seconded, and now is there any discussion? Members of the board, Bonita Lucky?
No questions. Did you ask me if I had any questions?
Yes.
No questions or comments, thank you.
Okay, Sarah Johansson.
I have one question, Mr. Westrom. Did you say, is this, we're going to be, work that's going to be completed over the summer, or will we wait until the fall, and will they be redoing that?
Yes, thank you for asking that question. This work will be done immediately over the summer, and we originally were thinking about doing it at the same time that we replaced the dome, but we felt it was more prudent to wait until the dome was installed. So the CMS Athletic Track Rehab Project will occur over the summer. It should be done in time for school to start.
Right, thank you.
Cheryl Pozine?
I'm just curious if this fell within kind of our expected budget. You know, then labor, tightness of the labor market and supplies and whatnot. I'm curious if that all is falling into place, or if we had to make adjustments.
Thank you for that question, Cheryl Pozine, who also chairs the Facility Committee of the Board. Actually, I probably should have made this in my introductory remarks. Most of our bids are coming in quite favorably, and at this point, we do not anticipate that we'll have any labor shortages or that we will have any supply chain issues. However, that could potentially occur. But at this point, our construction partners, Inspect in this case, has indicated that we believe that this will be on time, and we will have enough labor, and it did come in more favorably from a financial standpoint than originally estimated.
Thanks.
Chris will call.
No questions or comments, thank you.
Okay, so now, please call the roll.
Cheryl Pozine.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. C N Falconer, Andrea King not present. Linda Cohen.
Yes, so the motion passes, and on to the next item, Mr. Westrom.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. The next item is the Wayzetta High School Pavement Rehabilitation Project. The bid opening for the Wayzetta High School Pavement Rehabilitation Project was held at the Welcome Center on Thursday, June 3rd at 2:30 PM. The scope of this project involves pavement repair at the high school. The project is being financed by LTFM and was approved by the board a year ago, and this bid does come in more favorably than what we originally had projected. The enclosed document lists the lowest responsible bidders and their respective base bid amounts for the purposes of contract awards, and also enclosed is a detailed bid tabulation and recommendation from the district's construction partner for parking lots, Inspect. So with that, the recommended action is before you.
Great, thank you. And the recommended action is to award to the lowest responsible bidder listed in the enclosed document, Northwest Asphalt Incorporated, in the total amount of $292,000 construction contracts for the project. Is there any discussion? Again, asked, Chris McCullough?
Oh, Madam Vice Chair, that motion.
I seem to be forgetting that we need motions first. That's okay, three strikes, I'm up of right now.
You're doing fine.
Is there a motion to that effect?
This is Sarah, I so move, and second.
This is Chris, I'll second it.
All right, now, Chris, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not have any questions or comments, other than to say thanks to Jim and his team.
Okay, Cheryl?
The only question I have is similar to Sarah's question on the other one, is what is the, this is the summer that this will happen right away?
Yes, this is a summer project, and we... Yes, this is a summer project and we decided to defer it to this summer because of the fact that we were reconfiguring the entrance of the high school in a joint partnership with the city of Plymouth. So this contract or this work should be completed in time actually for the, the fall activities and athletics being.
Okay, thanks.
Bonita Lucky?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Cheryl Johansson?
No, just a thank you. Our high school will be nice and spiffy, as will our tracks before the start of the year. Thanks, Mr. Westrom and team.
Right now, clerk, please call the board.
Yes, Bonita Lucky. Yes. Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Cheryl Pozine?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
C N Falconer, Andrea Keen not present. Linda Cohen.
Yes. So the motion passes and we're on to the next item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board. The next item is a routine item that we do on an annual basis. You're probably aware that the district begins its budgetary process in July for the subsequent year. And a portion of that also involves the local property tax levy that will be certified by the board in December. So pursuant to Minnesota statutes, a school district may submit an update of its resident population estimate to the state demographer for approval. The population estimate update must be adopted by board resolution by July 1st and submitted to the state demographer no later than July 15th. If approved, the state demographer, if approved by the state demographer, the district's population estimate will be used to calculate its community education revenue, a portion which is funded by local property taxes. So with that, the recommended action is before you.
And the recommended action is to approve the population estimate of $73,017 as of June 2021. Is there a motion to that effect?
Madam Chair, I so, oh, go ahead, Cheryl.
Oh, I was just going to make that motion and ask that we waive the reading of the resolution, please.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Now we'll see if there's any discussion. So Cheryl Pozine?
No questions. Thank you.
Bonita Lucky?
No questions. Thank you.
Sarah Johansson?
No questions. Thanks.
And Chris McCullough?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, and so clerk, please call the board.
Cheryl Pozine?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
C N Falconer, Andrea Keen not present. Linda Cohen.
Yes. So again, the motion passes. Thank you all. Mr. Westrom, you have another item.
Yes, the next item is our final item for consideration and approval by the school board. So attached is the policy and regulations regarding negative student meal account and debt collection for your consideration. The policy and regulations were reviewed using the Minnesota School Board Association model policy were available by the Business and Finance Department and other district stakeholders were appropriate as well. A final review was completed by the Policy Committee of the School Board. And I would like to thank Merk Woodard, our Director of Business Services, and also Michelle Sagadell, our Director of Culinary Express for the tremendous amount of work and research they did to make sure that we have a best practices policy to recommend to the board this evening. So the recommended action is before you.
Yes, and we did skip one item, which was the school board candidate filing. And so we will go back to that item after we finish this one.
Okay, my, my screen's got a little, sorry. I kind of felt like I missed one.
That's right. We will pick that up right after we finish this one. So is there a motion? And the recommended action is to approve the adoption of Policy 734, Negative Student Meal Account and Debt Collection. Is there a motion?
Yeah, this is Chris and I move that we waive the second reading of Policy 734 and move policy ahead for approval tonight.
This is, this is Benita Lucky. I second.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Now we'll see if there's any discussion. Chris McCullough?
I would again like to thank the Policy Committee for its work on this policy, but also as Mr. Westrom indicated, I'd like to give thanks to Merk and Michelle, who did a lot of the, the work in developing this policy. And importantly, I want to thank Ashley for her work on this policy. And I was remiss in not thanking her for her work on the face covering policy as well. So thank you very much, Ashley.
Sarah Johansson?
Thanks. I'll just add one more thanks, which is a thanks to the Health and Wellbeing Ad hoc Committee. So Merk and Michelle brought this policy to the Health and Wellbeing Ad hoc Committee a couple of months ago. And, and the committee gave it a robust conversation and look over as it related to student health and wellbeing and our connection to that strategic direction. So thanks as well to the Health and Wellbeing Committee.
Bonita Lucky?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
And Cheryl Pozine?
No questions, but I do want to thank everybody for all their hard work on this. They landed in a great place and I know it's, it's a lot of work behind the scenes. So thank you.
And now, clerk, please call the board.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Cheryl Pozine?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky? Yes. C N Falconer, Andrea Keen not present. Linda Cohen.
Yes. So again, the motion passes unanimously with members present. And now we will go back to item number six. Mr. Westrom?
You're on mute.
Mr. Westrom, you're on mute.
Yeah, I've got too many screens going. That's how I missed this one. So I apologize, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board, that I missed this. This is an important item for your consideration and approval. The general election shall be held on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. At that election, three members will be elected to the school board for terms of four years each. As set by Minnesota statute, the period for filing affidavits of candidacy for the school board election begins on July 27th, 2021 and closes on August 10th, 2021. So the recommended action is before you.
And the recommended action is to adopt the resolution establishing the dates for filing affidavits of candidacy for the November 2021 school board election. Is there a motion to that effect?
This is Chris. I so move and waive the reading of the resolution itself.
Okay, and is there a second?
This is Cheryl. I will second. Excuse me.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Now we'll see if there's any discussion on this item. Cheryl Pozine?
No discussion. Thank you.
Bonita Lucky?
No questions. Thank you.
Sarah Johansson?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Chris McCullough?
No questions or comments. Thanks.
Okay, so clerk, please call the board.
Yes, Bonita Lucky. Yes. Cheryl Pozine?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
C N Falconer, Andrea Keen not present. Linda Cohen.
Yes. So the motion carries again unanimously with members present. I don't believe there's any, Mr. Westrom, before I move on. Thank you for a lot of items today. Appreciate all that hard work. There is no other board action? Are there any board reports? There is. All right. And so then I think we are ready to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Sarah. I so moved.
And is there a second?
This is Benita Lucky. I second.
And clerk, please call the board.
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Cheryl Pozine?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
C N Falconer, Andrea Keen not present. Linda Cohen.
Yes. So the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.